All right, good evening, Tri Valley at 7:01 PM. Will you please join me for the pledge? All right, thank you for coming this evening. I would like to read portions of Board Policy 1230, Public Comment at Board Meetings. The Board of Education encourages public comment on school-related matters at board meetings as outlined in this policy. To allow for public comment, a period not to exceed 30 minutes shall be set aside during the first part of each board meeting for public comment, with priority given to comments on items on the meeting's agenda. A second 30-minute time period will be set aside at the end of each board meeting for public comment on matters pertaining to the district, but not on the agenda. These periods may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Persons wishing to address the board shall advise the board president prior to the scheduled starting time of the meeting. This request shall be made in writing on a form provided by the district and shall include the name of the speaker, the address, telephone number, name of the organization representative, any, and a brief description of the topic to be addressed. Presentation should be as brief as possible. No speaker will be permitted to speak longer than five minutes. The board will not permit in a public session discussion involving individual personnel or students. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Persons making presentations at a board meeting will address remarks to the president and may direct questions or comments to the board members or other district officials only upon the approval of the president. If you would like to address the board tonight, the forms are on the table by the door. Please complete them and give them to the district clerk, Mrs. Peña. Also, as a reminder, guests at board meetings where may wear masks if they so choose. Please observe all proper social distancing protocols. All right, moving along. We have our tenure appointments. So I am going to ask Erin Toomey if you want to step up first. So first on the agenda is the tenure appointment of Bethany Hamilton.
Okay, let's see if I've got this. So Bethany Hamilton is unable to be with us here tonight. She had a family engagement that she had to attend to. But Bethany is without a doubt one of the finest teachers, not just new teacher, not just English teacher, but one of the finest teachers that we have. She works incredibly hard. She always is willing to do what it takes to help her students pick an activity, and she is probably involved with it. She's a member of the building leadership team. She's a teacher mentor. She is a student council advisor. She's a newspaper club advisor, GSA co-advisor, seventh grade advisor. She was instrumental in getting our color wars and competition nights going, and she is just a positive role model and mentor for her students. So we are very lucky to have her, and I'm sorry she couldn't be here tonight.
So Bethany did send us a card. It says, Dear Board of Education, I'm sorry that I cannot be with you this evening, but I want to send you all my most sincere thanks for granting me the honor of tenure. Coming home to TV has been an incredible experience, and I'm looking forward to working with our amazing students, faculty, and staff and community for years to come. Please send my congratulations to tonight's other tenure recipients. I hope you all enjoy your summer, and thank you again, sincerely, Bethany Hamilton. So I have the resolution. Be it resolved and in compliance with the provisions of Section 3013 of the Education Law and Part 30 of the Rules of the Board of Regents, and upon the recommendation of Dr. William Silver, Superintendent, that Bethany Hamilton, a probationary teacher, having been appointed by the Board of Education to a three-year probationary appointment in the tenure area of English effective September 1, 2019, and having been shown that Bethany Hamilton holds a valid New York State certificate number 1150442171 in the Tri Valley Central School District. Now, by resolution of this Board of Education dated June 2, 2022, the Board of Education does hereby appoint Bethany Hamilton to tenure in the area of English effective September 1, 2022. So I need a motion.
Motion.
Keith, second Pat, any discussion? Please proceed to vote. All of them? There should have been more of them. Okay, so while if it's okay, we're going to go with Sandra Lee since you're still at the podium.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Sandra Lee has been a teaching assistant with us, and we are exceptionally lucky to have her. No matter what I call her and ask her to do, can you help this kid? Can you work with this kid? Can this kid sit with you? The answer is always absolutely. Sandra is all about the kids. It's everything is focused on them, whether she is helping them with their academics, whether she is supporting them emotionally, whether she is feeding them whatever they need, Sandra is going to give them. And it's always with a positive message and to the benefit of the kid, to help them grow emotionally, physically, mentally, educationally, whatever they need. It's absolutely she can do it. Sandra has also been our district coordinator for the Single Bite Program, and she has been providing food to families, not just the kids in school, but delivering to families in the community as well. So Sandra is just a positive attribute to our district.
All right, so I'm going to read the resolution. I know you're really excited back there. Okay, so be it resolved and in compliance with the provisions of Section 3013 of the Education Law, Part 30 of the Rules of the Board of Regents, and upon recommendation of Dr. William Silver, Superintendent, that Sandra Lee, a probationary teacher, having been appointed by the Board of Education to a four-year probationary appointment in the tenure area of teaching assistant effective September 1, 2018, and having been shown that Sandra Lee holds a valid New York State certificate number 1529892211 in the Tri Valley Central School District. Now, by resolution of this Board of Education dated June 2, 2022, this Board of Education does hereby appoint Sandra Lee to tenure in the area of teaching assistant effective September 1, 2022. So congratulations, Sandra. Next, Ms. Williams. So the first tenure appointment is Janine Grigliano.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of the tenure recipients for this evening. To start with Mrs. Grigliano, she began her career with us at the elementary school teaching second grade. After her first year of teaching that grade level, her sophisticated teaching style made her more appropriate for an upper elementary level. She welcomed the suggestion and has been teaching our fifth graders in our building ever since. Mrs. Grigliano has embraced the curriculum. She's also embraced all of the students and as well as her colleagues at that level. With her students, she continues to demonstrate steady growth, where it is noticed that the students from where they start in the fall to where they grow to in the spring continue to be effective, if not highly effective at times. She goes above and beyond for all of her professional responsibilities, including her roles as student council co-advisor as well as grade level leader. It is my pleasure to be part of Janine's tenure recommendation, and Janine, I'm sure, and we certainly have a promise here, that you will continue to be an asset to Tri Valley School and all the students that you will have in years to come. So congratulations, Janine.
Okay, the resolution, be it resolved and in compliance with the provisions of Section 3013 of the Education Law, Part 30 of the Rules of the Board of Regents, and upon recommendation of Dr. William Silver, Superintendent, that Janine Grigliano, a probationary teacher, having been appointed by the Board of Education to a four-year probationary appointment in the tenure area of elementary education, effective September 1, 2018, and having been shown that Janine Grigliano holds a New York State certificate number 1186562171 in the Tri Valley Central School District. Now, by resolution of the Board of Education dated June 2, 2022, this Board of Education does hereby appoint Janine Grigliano to tenure in the area of elementary education, effective September 1, 2022. So congratulations, Janine. And next is Sarissa, is it Giglio? Giglio, okay.
Sarissa Giglio, yes. That is a common mistake, but we always correct that. So Sarissa Giglio, so Sarissa started with us, and she has been a computer teacher for us for the last four years for everything everyone knows about technology. She's able to stay abreast of all of the ever-changing instructional technology standards that come along with all the improvements to the tech world. Since she started with us, she has taught kindergarten through grade six. She's taught every grade level, but regardless of whatever grade it is that she teaches, her instructional observations continue to stay within the effective and highly effective category. Mrs. Grigliano, excuse me, Ms. Giglio, see now I've got the wrong name here. Ms. Giglio makes learning fun and relevant through the integration of high-interest topics, including coding, as well as some typing challenges that she puts the kids through. But they're super excited to be able to be competing with each other, and without them even knowing it, they're improving their ever-really-needed typing skills for the technology world that's ahead of them. Besides all the instructional aspects that the kids don't even know that they're learning, she also includes lessons on digital citizenship, which we all know is really very important for the world that they will be facing as far as all the technology that they will have in their hands. Ms. Giglio's other professional responsibilities include academic coach. She's been very helpful for us throughout this pandemic season as we had. She's also a part of our ruler committee, our SEL Committee, and also is our yearbook advisor. She has supported administration, big thank you here. She's supported me particularly through our computer-based testing. As we began to introduce the computer-based testing, she was a huge part in being helping us on the tech end. And then, once she was able to show her ability there, she has certainly helped on, go ahead with some of the instructional aspects of those state tests. So it is my pleasure once again to be able to be part of Sarissa's tenure recommendation. And again, I know, and this is certainly a promise, that Sarissa will continue to be an asset to Tri Valley School, community, and our students. Thank you, congratulations.
Resolution, be it resolved and in compliance with the provisions of Section 3013 of the Education Law, Part 30 of the Rules of Board of Regents, and upon the recommendation of Dr. William Silver, Superintendent, that Sarissa Giglio, a probationary teacher, having been appointed by the Board of Education to a four-year probationary appointment in the tenure area of elementary education, effective September 1, 2018, and having been shown that Sarissa Giglio holds a valid New York State certificate number 1557796211 in the Tri Valley Central School District. Now, by resolution of the Board of Education dated June 2, 2022, the Board of Education does hereby appoint Sarissa Giglio to tenure in the area of elementary education, effective September 1, 2022. Congratulations. And thank you, Erin and Jen, for sharing some nice, kind words of our tenured appointments. All right, presentation and guests, we do not have any presentations or guests. Correspondence I've shared from Ms. Hamilton. So public comment session for items that are on tonight's agenda. They are not on tonight's agenda. So next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Silver is unable to be here today, so Mr. Whitaker is standing in.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a little scary for Dr. Silver to be filled in by me, but that's okay. Just two quick things, a little construction update. Let's go over Phase One. As people are entering the building here, they can see that we are under construction to try to finish the entryway. The drainage has been done. The base is in. We have started pressure washing the side of the building, and tomorrow we hope to see some painters here to get this done. Next week, pavers are scheduled to start. So it's moving, not quite chronologically the way we thought it was going to, but it is moving along, so hopefully we'll be in good shape for graduation. Also, on Phase One, the EFS repair is scheduled to start shortly, which will be followed by the painting of the whole outside of the building. The Phase Two portion, the Home and Careers Room, has been completely dismantled. Framing is in progress and almost done, Corey. It's almost done. So they're moving right along, working on getting some field measurements, so that room is moving along nicely. Ceilings, some of the ceilings, like in the computer areas in some of the rooms, they've started taking those down and getting those in place. And we have started destructing some of the bathrooms, working on getting those going. So Phase Two is off to a good start. Hopefully, everything keeps moving along, but we'll keep giving you updates as the summer progresses. And the one other item, all board members today, it was brought to my attention through Dr. Silver, that some questions were asked about, yeah, we know when regents is, but what regents is when when? So you all have this on the table over there for anybody in the audience. There's a schedule of when certain regents is are, and Mrs. Toomey, just let me know that tomorrow this will be available on the website. And that's the superintendent's report. That was, any questions?
No questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you.
All right, Board Committee reports. Unfortunately, the Policy Committee is not here today, but we have several policies that are on the agenda for first reading. They will be reviewed and will be placed on the agenda for June 16. There are no other policies or committee meetings that meet until the fall at this point. No? Okay. Old business, no items of old business. We are now at a public comment session for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Oh, shoot. My apologies. All right, consent agenda. Need a motion and a second? Motion, Pat, second Keith. Any discussion? Okay, please proceed to vote. Decision unanimous? All right, thank you. My apologies. Next, we have public comment session for items that are not on tonight's agenda. The first person that signed in was Mary Tierney. You don't mind if we never put it in? All right, great, thank you.
Got it.
There you go. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I did go over all the policies that we were, that I guess you did the first reading tonight, and I have to say that I was saddened to see that with all the horrific news about the recent school shootings, that there's not one policy that has to do with the safety of our students and our staff. Nothing. And I want to know, what are you going to do going forward to ensure our community and our families that the students and staff are going to be safe? Thank you.
So Mary, in response, we do have a safety committee that meets regularly. They met two weeks ago. I think there's a future meeting in the next week, I think a week or two. June 21st with outside agencies to address any additional security concerns. We do have one SRO that's here all day, and we have two additional armed security officers that are also on premise all day long. After school, we do have continued security with armed security. It could be after school is armed security. Years ago, the board with other events that happened nationally were really concerned about the safety, so we did hire outside of SROs that are here during the day, a private security firm. So we do have armed security here throughout the day, whether it's after-school activities, and they're here when the kids get off the bus in the morning. So in addition, the report, next report probably wouldn't be until July's meeting for the Safety Committee, just because it's happening after the 16th of that board meeting. So, okay, you're welcome. Next is Justine Scully.
Okay, there are a few things. I also reviewed those policies that you had up for first reading, and there were some things that I just wanted to point out. The teaching about controversial issues, I understand that a lot of these things need to be in place and to clarify everybody's positions, but I think that there's a lot of verbiage that needs to be fine-tuned. That particular policy, 4810, I think there's, it lacks disclosure to families prior to presenting and discussing controversial topics. It also gives a lot of control or leaves all the control to the teachers, and it doesn't, it doesn't address, you have a policy prior to this that has really good language in it, and that talk about how to even approach the subject. For instance, it says such issues shall be neither sought or avoided. They must have educational value and be relevant to the curriculum, be appropriate to the age and maturity level of the students. So that's omitted in this new one. And there's also, it doesn't notify as the prior one that the teachers even have to notify the administration of topics to be discussed. The second paragraph is concerning to me, too. Just the first sentence, it seems to be an emotionally charged sentence. I just think in, you know, when we talk about polarizing situations in the community and the state of the nation, that you need, I just would hope that you would be careful in how you present that language to people, because we want to be unifying. We don't want to be divisive. So that was, that was my thought on that. And then the public complaints, policy 1400. It just, it seems that a lot of this is really intimidating, I think, if someone were to read it, just your base, you know, your average parent or family member, guardian. It almost seems that it's very bureaucratic, and you need to have representatives representing us, and which is what I thought, you know, the board is here for. It seems to be, you know, tossing the ball around a bit. So the last sentence of the first paragraph there just seems unapproachable. Anyway, so I just, that was, those are my comments on that. And I see that some of them are local, so I guess that they don't really, it could be revised, and you don't really need to, they're not required. So I would hope that there's going to be dialogue with families and parents and the community on that. So that was my input on that. And then, on February 17th, I asked that a policy be written to address teachers' social media, and the board agreed to do so. Jo and Erin said that they write that, and I would just keep abreast of that. So after a few months, on May 3rd, I think it was, I was finally told that the board would not be writing that policy. And I feel that this is in everybody's best interest to write a comprehensive policy, both for the teachers and the students, our children's safety being the most important. Therefore, I'd like to request that in light of our new board members coming in and their criminal justice background and their knowledge, that that be put on, back on the agenda to have a policy written when the new board takes place and convenes.
I'll make sure that's on July.
Okay.
For the new board and new superintendent.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Norma, did anybody else sign in to speak? All right, thank you. Announcements, reminders, and upcoming events. It's exciting news that our seniors are right now on their class trip down in Orlando. Very exciting for them. Announcements, reminders, upcoming events.
Here we go. Good evening again, everyone. I just want to mention a couple of things. About a month ago, I think I told you that the Office of Early Learning from New York State was coming to visit our pre-K. They did come, and they gave us a lot of high remarks or high grades, I guess you could say. They visited the classrooms, all of the classrooms, spent some time in the classrooms, and then met with me and Jen Williams and Mr. Whitaker and Dr. Silver, and had a discussion about how we run the program. And so, of course, there's always a few things that we can work on, and we are working on those. And some of that has to do with communication, for example. One of the little things that we're doing right now is putting together a brochure for incoming parents of pre-K students to answer some general questions before they come to the orientation, which is just before school starts. So that was really good, and we did a parent survey along, around the same time, and I'll have to share that with you another time because I didn't bring it tonight, but a lot of very positive comments and rankings, I guess you would say, from the parents of current pre-K students. And we're also currently planning for the summer program, which we plan to run for rising first graders through ninth graders, maybe 10th graders. It's a little harder to get some of the older kids to sign up, but we are working towards that, and we will be running some credit recovery math classes as well. In terms of the grants which we're working on, beginning, in the beginning of July, we will be having some community chats as we've had in the past, parent-community chats. Sometimes we've done them virtually in the past couple of years, which is pretty good turnout. This year, we're going to do a combination of virtual and in-person, and offer the option while we're in person for people to join virtually as well. So that's our plan there. That's all I have. Any questions, comments?
Congratulations, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening once again. We are super busy down in the elementary school. Our field trips and all of the field trip experiences are continuing on. This coming Monday, we have our The Lions C program coming back in. For those of you that are not familiar, that is when permission slips go home, and students are able to come in to have a special vision screening. Over the few, the last few years that we have partnered with them, there have been a number of students who have been identified as needing eyeglasses or having some other kind of visual impairment that the machine that the organization brings in with them is able to catch. So we're excited to be able to bring them back in, so that, you know, sometimes parents just don't see that there is a need for their child to be able to see better. So we're excited to have them. On Tuesday, we will be having our DARE graduation for our fifth graders who went through that DARE program. That will be happening during the school day, and then during the evening, we have our five-through-eight concert, yes, grade five through eight. On Wednesday is our parent-teacher conference. conferences. That is our last opportunity for parents to meet with their child's teacher for the year. And then on Thursday, we will have our John Lennon Project coming in, and there'll be more information that will be provided for that, along with a really cool combination of some choral renditions that the kids will be doing. So I don't want to give too much away with that, because I don't want the kids to know about about it. But I'll be sure to be able to provide what they create to the board once it's finished next week. Otherwise, we are a race to the finish line, and we've got lots going on. Oh, Miss, yes. June twenty-third, and all of that can be found on our website for the district's calendar, any of our events that are taking place. Yes. I had to flip my sticky note. Thanks, Deb. The other side of my sticky note here. Yes, we have our Willy Wonka play. My goodness, the fifth and sixth graders in the elementary school, it is a five-through-eight junior play, Willy Wonka Junior. But if I can speak specifically and particularly for the elementary school students who are involved in this play, they are very excited to be able to put on this production. The production will be taking place June eighth, ninth, and tenth, which is next Friday and Saturday. I was so close, Deb. I did have that wrong on here. That is fair. It is June, it's next Friday, Friday, and Saturday. Thank you, Deb. Ten and eleven. Oops. But with this, students are excited. The elementary school students will have the opportunity to preview the play during the school day. So hopefully, we'll be, we'll be able to increase our attendance for that evening. And the book fair, I don't even want to say the date, Deb, in case I have that wrong on here. There you go. Same day as the parent-teacher conference is, and that is Wednesday evening again, that is next week. Teamwork. Thanks, Deb. Any, any other questions there? Again, all of these should be able to be found on our district websites and our calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a little bit of a list here. We're busy in the secondary school as well. As you mentioned, our senior, our seniors are in Orlando right now with Mr. Pulley, Mrs. Hugler, and Mrs. Swett, and I'm a little jealous, but I, I hope that they have a fantastic time. We already talked about the choral concert and Willy Wonka, which are coming up and including some of our students as well. So we're excited at our end as well. On June ninth, our civics and social, social justice class students will be presenting their capstone projects in the upper gym, and that will be between twelve-thirty and two-forty-five. June fourteenth is a really big day for us. That is our last day of classes for grades seven through twelve. We have a field day for seventh and eighth grade that day. We have a senior barbecue. We have an FFA banquet. We have senior celebration. So that's a really big day. Everything's going on then. On the fifteenth, we start our regents exams. So the fifteenth through the twenty-third, we have regents exams, just to give you a heads-up on that. And I know the schedule has been making its rounds. We'll get that on the website also. On June fifteenth, we have our National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony. And on June twenty-first, we have our grad walk in the morning.
What was the day of the grad walk? The twenty-first?
Twenty-first. So lots of stuff going on.
And then graduation is the twenty-fifth.
Correct.
Okay. You're good. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right, new business. First is a resolution for Witsen School Nutrition Corp. emergency contract for twenty-two, twenty-three. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent schools, that the Board of Education awards Witsen School Nutrition Corp. a type-two, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three food service management company, emergency contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year in accordance with the rules and regulations of NICID Child Nutrition Program. I only had one question. Is this similar to like the pandemic assistance that you had?
So the state again offered, the state again offered the ability to have a one-year emergency contract. We had two choices this year. We could have gone out for an RFP, wrote that eight-hundred-page document, and gone out, or enter into this emergency one-year contract. Discussing it with Dr. Silver, we thought going for the one-year at this point in time was a better option, because, one, it's one year. Next year, we're going to have to go out for an RFP, no matter what. And true to what we expected, with, everybody knows what prices are up. So going into this one year in consultation with our consultant, it sounds like extra consulting, but he actually said to us, he goes, you're probably going to be better off doing this. He goes, not that you're guaranteed anything, but we never know what's going to happen any year. So it's basically an easy way to do a one-year emergency contract. The state allowed for it, and, you know, next year, we'll probably have to be doing an RFP.
Maybe also any questions? All right. Need a motion and a second? Motion Keith, second Danielle. Please proceed to vote. Was that unanimous, Norma? Next, draft board meeting calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three. Review, discussion, possible action. My only concern with this is if the new leadership wants to change the meeting date. So I don't know if we want to approve the summer schedule, and then see what works for the consensus of the board next year. I just, I feel uncomfortable selecting a date if, you know, we don't have our new superintendent and three new board members here to decide what the calendar is.
I think this is basically kind of what we've been doing. It's, we didn't change it. We just, I'll be here next week. I don't know if anybody else is staying on.
Okay.
There was nothing that crazy with it.
No, no. And in the summer, I spoke with Dr. Silver today. There's limited meetings just because it's summertime, and it's hard to get consensus grouped together. But the seventh of July would be the first reorg meeting and the first meeting of the school year. And that has to be done timely, so that that date really is not flexible. And then moving forward, there are only two dates in August before school starts. All right. Yeah. They started at five because of heat. Do you want to move the time for July and August to five o'clock?
I don't think for the reorg meeting that we went, really, but the other one we did. It's here, though. It doesn't matter. This space is usable all summer. There's nothing happening in here. This is a relatively, you go upstairs, totally different story.
Right.
As long as we're here, I don't have an issue.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. So you want to leave, leave the time for seven o'clock? And then if you have to post early, then you post early. That'll work for you. Okay. All right, you have the reorg meeting at seven o'clock, yeah. And there's two meetings that evening. There's the reorganization and the regular, the regular meeting. All right. I need a motion and a second? Motion, second Keith. Any more discussion? All right. Be it resolved, the board review, discuss, and adopts proposed board meeting calendar for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Please proceed to vote.
Norma, could you reach out to the new board members about the seventh and make sure they're aware of that date? Thank you.
And it's seven o'clock, Norma. Okay. All right, next memorandum of agreement, Board of Education and Dr. William Silver. Did you vote? Yeah. It was, it was striker. You have it now, Norma? Okay. Next memorandum of agreement, Board of Education, Dr. William Silver. Be it resolved, the board approves the memorandum agreement between the Board of Education and Dr. William Silver. I need a motion and a second? Motion Keith. Second Danielle, any discussion? Please proceed to vote. Was it unanimous? At this time, there is no need to go into an executive session, so I need a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion Keith, second Pat. It is seven-thirty-eight PM. Good night, Tri-Valley. Next meeting is June sixteenth at seven PM.